I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. This is a Prescott City Council Study Session. Let's please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr. Councilman Blair.
Yo.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Oh.
All are present.
Thank you for that. So, thanks for being here today, everybody. We have two items on the agenda. The clerk has asked me to announce that if you're with a board, commission, or committee, to please sign in. The signup is back here on the table. Is that right, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. And there are public comment cards back there as well, if you'd like to do public comment. And I think that's everything I need to announce, so start with item 3A.
Open meeting law training.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Matthew Boudrecchi, your interim city attorney. Today, we'll be talking about the open meeting laws. We try to train on this with the council at least once a year. There is also a more thorough training online that City Attorney Palladini did a couple of years back, that people can catch if they want to look at that. Time permitting, we'll get through the open meeting law for sure today. We will talk a little bit about public records and conflicts of interest, if we can. If not, we'll reschedule that for another time. So, the open meeting law is an Arizona statute, often referred to as the Sunshine Laws. The purpose of the open public meeting laws is for official deliberations to be done in public. It maximizes public access and participation, allows for transparency, and any uncertainties regarding whether or not something should be done in a public meeting are resolved in the favor of openness. So, when we talk about public meetings, we have to start with the beginning definition of what is a meeting? A meeting is a gathering, in person or through technological devices, of a quorum of the public body to discuss, propose, deliberate, and take legal action. We will analyze those four issues a little bit more fully as we go, but as you're all aware, sometimes council members will call in via telephone to participate in a meeting, and that's perfectly acceptable. If you don't have a quorum, a quorum of this council is four people, half plus one of seven. You don't have a meeting. The city attorney will basically tell you to don't have any discussions and reschedule any presentations. Notice and agendas are very important in Arizona under the open public meeting law. You have to give notice of where and when the public body will meet. Agendas must contain adequate information to inform the public of matters to be discussed or decided. Typically shy away from things like old business and new business. We want an actual agenda item to be discussed. We do combine the notice and agenda into one document, which is acceptable, and it requires a minimum of 24 hours' public notice to have a meeting. And as you guys know, during a regular meeting, if people start tending to not address the subject matter on the agenda, the attorney or the mayor often will kind of corral people back into the discussion item. There are certain exceptions. I've never seen them arise as to when you don't need notice. One is where an actual emergency exists. Never seen that happen. And you can recess and resume a properly noticed meeting to a later date by making an announcement at the meeting and describing what the agenda items will be covered. You see that occasionally when meetings go well into the evening, past 12 o'clock. What are public bodies? An entity, however designated, officially established on motion or order of the public body or presiding officer of a public body, whose members are appointed for specific purposes of making a recommendation concerning a decision to be made or considered, a course of conduct to be taken or considered by the public body. So, this legislative body has certain standing committees, special committees, advisory committees, and subcommittees. All of those are considered public bodies and must comply with the open meeting law. The only exception as to the open public meetings are executive sessions, which we'll talk about a little bit further, but the general gist is all legal action must be done in a public meeting. And we'll discuss what a legal action is as we get into this. But just deviating off the open meeting law a little bit into that exception of the executive sessions, those require prior consent of the city attorney to make sure we are falling within one of seven legal reasons for convening into executive session. The most common ones that we deal with are personnel matters, discussion of confidential information, legal advice from the city's attorneys, and discussing of settlement, contract, or property negotiations. So, who can attend executive sessions? Members of the public body, persons who may be subject to a personnel discussion, the auditor general, and individuals whose presence is reasonably necessary in order for the public body to carry out its executive session responsibilities. So, some of the pitfalls we see with executive sessions are the confidential nature of executive sessions. So, much like Las Vegas, what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas. What happens in an executive session stays in an executive session. At every executive session, the attorneys read and admonition. It's required by law that information is to remain confidential in an executive session. You cannot take legal action in an executive session. Again, all votes must be taken in a public meeting for an actual legal action. So, what constitutes legal advice when we go into executive session? Advice given to the public body regarding the legal ramifications of facts and information given to the attorneys and the legality of a proposed action. That's straight out of a City of Prescott case. I like throwing in the City of Prescott cases, since we set some interesting laws. What we don't do in an executive session, we shouldn't be polling each other, limit discussions with other members of the public meeting. Hold on a second. So, all right, so we're out of executive sessions. We're into what constitutes things we should be doing in a regular meeting. So, we don't poll in a meeting. We limit discussions with other members of the public meeting. We don't send emails to each other. We distribute information to the council through staff liaison and disband meetings when we don't have a quorum in attendance. Those are just some regular catchwells. We'll talk about this email thing a little bit more fully, because that seems to be something that tangles people up, because it can be an actual meeting, even though you don't have four people together at the same place. So, what we're looking to avoid is polling individual commission members or council members to reach a decision prior to a meeting. You don't do that. You don't pick up the phone and call three people and say, "Hey, we're proposing to do this. What do you think?" That could constitute a legal action and a violation of the open meeting law. Discussions or deliberations between less than a quorum of the purpose of circumventing the open meeting law. So, you don't want to have limited meetings with the intent to circumvent the open meeting law. Sometimes this is called splintering the quorum, and we see violations of the open meeting law where you have serial communications, whether those are verbal, written, or done electronically, where one person will send a proposed legal action to another person, and the other person may send it to another person, and the other person may send it to another person. Suddenly, you have a meeting of four people. That's often referred to as daisy chain. There's also a hub and spokes analogy where one person is reaching out to all different members of the council proposing legal action. We don't do that. So, you should avoid discussing, deliberating, taking legal action, banding back and forth among a quorum of people on matters that could foreseeably come before the city council or your board and commission. What does proposing legal action mean? It's kind of an intricate definition, but it means to put forward for consideration, discussion, or adoption an idea or an action. And it can only take one person to propose a legal action, and it is unlawful to propose legal actions outside of a duly noticed public meeting. So, here are some examples. Somebody tells another councilperson, that councilperson Smith was admitted to the hospital last night. This does not propose a legal action. But the other example that says we should install a crosswalk at First and Main does propose a legal action. It's more than a topic for the agenda, because it urges or suggests an outcome. Again, here's the rest of...
Can I ask you a question?
You may.
So, in a conversation, isn't there a difference between we should propose, we should have a crosswalk at, let's say, on Montezuma Street, and we should propose it in the next meeting, and just a conversation piece, like we should have a, we should have a crosswalk?
Right. Again, the quorum is what gets you into trouble. So, as you are aware, under your council rules of procedure, the mayor can put an item on the agenda, or two councilmembers can put an item on the agenda. Either way, you're not at four. So, that discussion could be fine, so long as you don't have four people then suddenly weighing in. Where you have the problem is, let's say you do an email to Councilwoman Orr saying, "I think we should have something at First and Main," and then she forwards it to the mayor, and the mayor forwards it to Alexa. Suddenly, you have four people proposing a legal action. That's a problem. But proposing a legal action to be placed on an agenda, as long as the two of you and/or the mayor, you should be fine, because you're not talking about a majority of the council.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Matt. I have a question. Let's say a councilmember is giving a talk to a group in the public, and there's, say, a couple of other councilpeople in the audience, and the councilmember giving the talk is talking about issues. Are there any guidelines that the councilmember giving the talk needs to abide by, or does it fall under free speech?
A couple of things going on in that example. One is when staff knows there are going to be a majority or a quorum in a public meeting, we do one of two things. One, if we think it's going to be sort of a meeting that doesn't involve council action, we do a courtesy notice, just to let the public know there may be four people.
Like the Rotary Club or something.
Right. And we do basic notices for that. But what you shouldn't do at the Rotary Club is start talking amongst the four, if there are four there, about a proposed legal action. The other example you raise is, let's say you're officially giving a speech, and three other people are there. We would notice that it's probably just a regular public meeting, just so the public knows that there may be action discussed at a meeting. But generally, I think what you're referring to are probably your Rotary Clubs and, you know, these sorts of get-togethers, which we do the courtesy notices for.
Ari, thank you.
You're welcome. A couple more examples. Here's a recipe for lemon bars. He's a good, John Palladini went out of his way to focus on food. I like that. Not a request for legal action, but when somebody says, "I hope I can count on all of you to vote in favor of agenda item number five," that is proposing a legal action.
Matt, can I ask you a question?
You may.
If, in fact, the subject of the query by another councilman is, "Are you going to be able to be at the meeting on Tuesday?", that's not a situation where it's taking a poll or other than, you know, are you going to be able to attend?
Correct.
Okay.
That would not be a violation. A couple more action items. I like this one, actually. I think we should consider firing the city manager at our next meeting. Probably a violation of a meeting law if you're talking amongst four of you. I'd like to discuss the city manager's performance at our next meeting. You know, when in doubt, you're probably going to just agendize that as a discussion of the city manager's performing at the next meeting. Verbal serial communications going from one person to the next, sharing communications among a quorum would violate the open meeting law. Again, it's the quorum. You're kind of, you don't want a quorum of the council discussing legal actions outside of a duly noticed public meeting. Letters, a series of letters from one member to the next could be a violation of the open meeting law, if you hit that four-person mark. Emails occurring at different times can still constitute a meeting. You can have emails occurring over a matter of weeks, and if, you know, you have four people suddenly offering up their opinions on legal action, it could be a violation. You cannot use email to circumvent the open meeting law. You cannot use email among a quorum to, again, propose legal action, discuss legal action, deliberate on legal action, or take legal action. So, with emails, we, I'm trying to look at this, the kind of the do list. We recommend that you work through your staff. If you have an issue you want discussed, don't circulate the email to each other as councilmembers. Send it to your city manager or your city attorney, and they can communicate the information back to the rest of the councilmembers. Email communications are treated the same as any other form of communication between board members. And again, emails exchanged among a quorum of the board that involves discussion deliberations or taking legal actions that come before the board could constitute a meeting and thus violate the open meeting law, because it's not an agenda in an open meeting. This is a little hairy or confusing, but there is no distinction between discussing facts versus discussing opinions among a quorum. A deliberation, again, is defined as a collective acquisition and exchange of facts preliminary to a final decision. Therefore, a two-way discussion of facts among a quorum regarding potential board business could be a violation. Staff can send emails to the other board members, like I suggested. Passive receipt of information, or even the kind of the example that Councilman Sishka raised, without more, does not violate open meeting laws. An example, you know, receiving your board packets. Staff may not send opinions or substantive communications about board business from a board member to enough other board members to constitute a quorum. So, the staff will not necessarily be sending you the opinions or the substantive communications that you would like to discuss. Blogs and social media. We're in a brave new world these days. Like Twitter and Facebook can present some issues similar to the email among board members. If a quorum of members is discussing board business using any technological means, a meeting may result. Like email, this type of communication doesn't have to occur among a quorum of members simultaneously to be considered a meeting. It can happen over a period of time. And like emails, this type of communication can occur in a personal computer, your smartphone, and still be board business. It goes to the content of the communication, not the manner of the way the communication is given. Again, you can have the fear that this may turn into a virtual meeting, and those require notice and access to technological equipment, as well as virtual meeting opinions. And those types of electronic public records must be maintained, preserved, and produced as part of the public record. And the city just finished up revamping its social media policy to talk about how we're going to collect those records and maintain them according to state law. So, we save Facebook communications for a certain matter of years.
Matt, can I ask you another question?
Yes.
As far as, say, you have various people on boards and commissions or councilmembers as friends on Facebook.
Uh-huh.
And you state a position as a post. Is that because it's a public forum? You know, it's not only sharing with the board members or with the council or whatever. Where does that stand?
Again, I think if you state a post and three other people go, "Yeah, I'm with you. I think we should do this," then you may have a violation of the open meeting law, because, again, you've got the quorum talking about a potential legal action.
But you're also sharing it with everybody else in the world, well, certainly the people who are your friends.
Yeah. And I just don't think that is relevant one way or the other.
Okay.
If you've got a quorum all kind of offering up an idea or proposing some sort of legal action, even if it's on Facebook, you may have a problem. Now, if you post something and everyone likes it with a thumbs up, it may be less of an issue.
So, if I can't find a recipe, I can call you and ask you for it?
Or lemon bars on that one. You cannot direct staff to communicate in violation of the open meeting law. Sanctions may be imposed if you aid and abet for a violation of the open meeting law pursuant to statute. Here's where you get into some best practices, where you may be asking for trouble by doing certain things, so we recommend you don't do them, such as passing notes when you're on the dance, even if it's something as innocuous as ordering lunch, or whispering to fellow councilmembers, privately using modern technology if you're playing on your cellphones during a regular meeting. Kind of puts the public in a kind of a questioning, you know, mode as to what are you really doing? So, we advise you don't do those things, and we advise you don't talk amongst a quorum of yourselves before or after meetings. Again, to Councilwoman Rusing's point, with social events, if a quorum might be present, we do post a courtesy agenda, and we include a statement that no business of the public body will be discussed and no action will be taken. The interplay between public forums, free speech, and community events is something you always should just be aware of. If a quorum might be present when one or more councilmember is discussing or speaking on city business, those in attendance, again, often we will just make a special meeting agenda, even though it's outside of this normal venue, and you may, and you're covered. The agenda should have a description of the general topics to be discussed, and typically that no action will be taken. And the attorney's office should review those agendas for accuracy. Certainly, as elected officials have the right to talk to the media. There's an attorney general opinion on this. However, quotes can be taken out of context. There's an Abraham Lincoln quote from Facebook. I don't believe everything you read on the internet just because there's a picture with a quote next to it. And then you see, it's like Vice President Biden making a gaffe to the press. Here's what the public is allowed to do when they attend council meetings. They're allowed to attend a public meeting. They're allowed to listen. They can tape-record it. They can videotape it. Public body cannot require attendees to identify themselves or sign in unless they're making a presentation. We have our little presentation forms. Public has no right to speak or disrupt. Council meetings are business meetings of the city council, and while occasionally issues of great interest may arise that may get the public agitated or interested, they still don't have a right necessarily to speak on something or disrupt it unless it's in accordance with your established protocols. When in doubt, we resolve issues in favor of openness. And that's kind of open meeting law in a nutshell. We can now talk about public records, and Arizona imposes a presumption in favor of disclosure of public records. The exception is when public disclosure and access is outweighed by either confidentiality, privacy, or the best interests of the state, or in this case, the best interests of the We have to maintain records reasonably necessary to provide an accurate accounting of official activities of the government-funded business. Other matters may be included in public records, such as documents held by a public officer in his official capacity. All records received made by public officials or employees in the course of their duties is property of the city, considered public record. A public officer or other person having custody or possession of any record for any purpose who, quote, "steals" or knowingly and without lawful authority destroys, mutilates, defaces, alters, falsifies, removes, or secretes, all are part of the public record or permits any other person to do so is guilty of a felony. Arizona takes their public records very seriously, as does the city. There are, there is that three-part test where you can withhold public records if privacy interests are implicated or confidential information is involved, or it's in the best interest of the city not to release information. But know that the very strong presumption in Arizona is records are public information. And then I just want to touch a little bit on conflict of interest. There's a distinction between a statutory conflict of interest in the state of Arizona versus what people may perceive as conflicts of interest. When we're talking about conflicts of interest, we're talking about statutory conflicts of interest under Title 38, and those are conflicts that involve decisions where a councilmember or the member of a councilmember's family may receive a benefit, either to a proprietary or pecuniary benefit. That is, a decision before the council where an individual councilmember may make or lose property, or may make or lose a profit, is what we're talking about when we talk about substantial activities. This applies to all public officers, including board and commission members, and public employees like me and Michael Lamar. Here's kind of the rule. A public officer who has or whose relative has a substantial interest in any decision of the public agency, or in any contract, sale, purchase, or service to such public agency, must disclose that interest in the official record and not vote or participate in the decision or transaction. And again, a substantial interest is any pecuniary or proprietary interest, either direct or indirect, other than a remote interest. The statute has a list of remote interests that will take you out of the substantial interest, which we'll talk about a little bit further. But again, pecuniary is whether you stand to gain or lose money. Generally, proprietary is whether you stand to gain or lose property. So, the three questions to always ask yourselves to try to identify whether you have a true conflict of interest is, will my decision have a positive or negative impact on my interests or that of my relatives? Do I have a monetary or ownership interest in the matter? And is my interest other than one of those designated remote interests? And what do you do if you actually have a substantial conflict? You refrain from voting on or participating in the decision. You make the conflict of interest known in the official record, and we recommend that you leave the table or the room when the remainder of the council is discussing that Remote interests are financial and property interests deemed so minor as not to trigger the reporting or nonparticipation requirement, and a councilmember may still vote and participate in discussions. Examples of this are when you have a noncompensated officer of a nonprofit corporation sitting on your council, landlord or tenant of a contracting party, an attorney's client is a contracting party, a member of a nonprofit marketing association, an owner of less than 3% shares of the corporation, which I don't know if we have any billionaires on the council. I'll have to check into that. But that one doesn't arise too often. Examples of remote interests are reimbursement for your actual and necessary expenses in the performance of your official duties. So, if you make a motion to cover the gas charges to go up and down to Phoenix for official business, that's not going to be an actual substantial interest. The receipt of municipal services is under the same terms and conditions as the general public. So, if you have to vote on a road paving job that's going to be in front of your house, it's not a substantial conflict of interest, because you're getting the same benefit as other members of the public. Officer employees of another public agency, unless a direct economic benefit or detriment to the officer or employee or the relative involved. And this one, we see occasionally, the member of a group or class of at least 10 with an interest no greater than that of another. And where I've seen that is when you have realtors on the council who may or may not at some point wind up getting some sort of a contract to represent somebody on, say, approval of a subdivision. Other prohibitions are gifts and bribes. You can never use your official position to secure and never accept. You can never use your official position to secure and never accept any valuable thing or benefit that would not ordinarily accrue in the performance of your official duties. Additional income, a public officer or employee may not receive any additional compensation in matters before the agency. So what if you're not sure? You come to the attorney's office and ask for an opinion. Opinions by the city attorney regarding conflicts of interest or matters of public record are filed with the city clerk. On occasion, we will issue an official written opinion if the council member requests that, and we deem that there is in fact no conflict of interest. And those are kept in a special file in the clerk's office. Did you know that, Sarah? All right. If there are violations of the conflict of interest statute, the contracts that may have been passed are deemed voidable. Somebody who's affected adversely may sue, and the courts can assess attorney's fees and costs as part of the civil judgment against you. Penalties for violation of conflict of interest law can be pretty severe, up to and including the forfeiture of your office, a felony if there's an intentional violation of the conflict of interest law, and/or a misdemeanor if it's negligent or reckless violation of the conflict of interest law. So it's pretty serious stuff. So those are the troika of the bread and butter business of the city attorney, open meetings, public records, and conflict of interests. So I think we got through that.
Half an hour?
Oh, half an hour. I was given a half an hour by Tyler Goodman, so I can't violate that. Again, if, there's a more comprehensive video online if anyone wants to take a look at that, and you all know where to find me if you have any particularized questions that you want to answer.
Thanks, Matt. Good presentation. Councilmember Rusin, I think, has a question.
Thank you, Matt. I have a question, going back to the open meeting law section. What happens if we violate the open meeting law? What are the consequences to the council?
Intentional violations of the open meeting law can include criminal sanctions. Typically, if it's an inadvertent violation, that does happen on occasion, we can go back and do a process called a ratification, where the matter comes back before the council for an official vote, and that gets ratified. And that's a process that requires several days' notice to the, to the public, not just the 24-hour notice.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Okay. Thanks again, Matt. Well, let's move on to item B. Strategic planning session. Tyler is very excited that Barry Aaron's is in the house because he was going to be facilitating.
I have a comment, though. Before we go, I've got something for Barry. It happens to be a bolo tie. I normally don't think about business while I'm on vacation, but when I was in Scotland, I saw this bolo tie, and I said, I have got to get Barry this bolo tie, so this is for you, sir.
Bowtie.
Thank you, thank you for all what you do.
That's very conflict.
It's under $25. I think it's under $50.
I think I got.
I don't know how the pound is relating to the euros.
I got it for free.
No violation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This afternoon, we have Barry Aaron's with us to do our strategic planning, so I'll turn that time over to him.
Barry, welcome. It's good to have you with us. Couple new faces possibly for you, new councilmember Kathy Rusin.
Councilmember Rusin, a pleasure to meet you.
As well as our new city clerk, Sarah Seip.
Hi there. Nice to see you.
And before we get started, I want to publicly, formally thank you for your work on the FAA funding. I know you had something to do with that. You and I traveled around DC asking those questions, and then recently, I appreciate your work on the ADOT funding for the airport again. That was very helpful, and we really appreciate your efforts on those two items.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. It was, I don't want to say it was a lot easier than it seemed because I want to be valuable to you, but quite frankly, the, the extra quarter of a million dollars that was the matching funds, it was one of those cases of DOT originally made a mistake, and they did not do a calculation or a recognition of something. And I talked to Kevin Beastie, who is the director of policy there, is a longtime friend of mine, and I called him, and he said, no. And I said, well, why don't you run it back up the flagpole? And he did, and he came back, he said, we made a mistake. You should have gotten it. So I'm glad that we were brought into it, and I'm glad that we had the opportunity to help it, and every nickel and dime that we can get in that project is going to be helpful. What we have done, if you'll remember, those of you who were on council when I started this, and there's three of you remaining who were on council when we initially started this strategic planning process, which was about two and a half years ago, will remember, we established a process, and I just wanted to go over a couple of background things and protocol things, especially for Councilwoman Rusin, because she has not been through this. I think Councilwoman Shoal was through a revision of it at one point in time. We use a standard format that I have used when I do strategic planning in terms of the format of it, and it's, it's the goals, objectives, strategies, and tactics. And we divide that up into goals and objectives, and that's the responsibility of the city council, because you are the ones that are setting the policy, you are the ones that are establishing where you want to be, what you want the city to look like, and how you want the city to operate. Strategies and tactics, we have generally left to staff, because it is the goals and objectives, and the objectives have metrics assigned to them, and then you're giving them off to Michael, and Michael and his staff is going to make a determination on how to implement those objectives to, to achieve those metrics, and then you're going to, you're going to go forward. Sometimes it takes the support and the action of the council to come back and actually act on something. Sometimes it takes the action of the city citizens. If you'll remember, one of our initial goals and objectives had to do with PSPRS, and you will remember that we decided that the best way to retire the, at that moment, $78 million shortfall was to go forth with a dedicated tax. It was on the ballot in the August election of 18, am I correct, or 17? 17. And if you'll remember, we had a fight through the legislature who was changing the date of when you could have elections for tax matters, and we were able to get them to amend that bill so that we could go ahead with our, with our elections. So sometimes that's going to happen. That is not a usual circumstance. Sometimes it will take action of the legislature. And there will be one or two things here that I suspect that you're going to want to discuss today that may be objectives that will require some legislative assistance. So with that in mind, what I'd like to do is just start from the beginning. Cue my associate. And just start with goal one, and the goal one is stabilizing the general fund, continually supporting the market compensation plan, and providing adequate and stable funding and flexibility to maintain a balanced budget as required by charter. We had set a couple of, or three strategies under this, and let me just go over them, and then we can open it up for conversation among the members of the council. Objective number one was to continue to stabilize the general fund. I suspect and suggest that that is something that every city council should continually have as one of its main objectives, and obviously, that is a, that is a measurable. I mean, it's easy to do a metric, and that is, if your general fund is in balance and you're stabilized, then you know you're doing all right. Retire the PSPRS unfunded liability based on the fiscal '17, '18 actuarial, administrative, and financial assumptions as soon as possible, and under that, we had adopted strategies that the staff implemented, and that was to use the dedicated sales tax of 0.75%, and the dedication was actually in the ballot proposition, so that money cannot be used for anything other than that or diverted. And number two was to seek state assistance, and to that end, we have been participating at the mayor's level and at my level as your legislative consultant to work with the other communities around the state to seek other types of assistance that might help communities. We are not the only ones that are struggling under PSPRS. We have some very specific problems that need to be addressed, and we have been working with that. To that end, for example, was the additional money we needed to, for the hotshots consideration. And you will remember that last year, Senate President Fan was able to get $1 million a year for seven years. We wanted 7 million. Obviously, it's kind of difficult to walk into the legislature and say, I want $7 million, even if you're president of the Senate, I might add. And I will tell you that what she was able to do was not just to get the million per year, but to make sure that the million per year is what we refer to as baked into the base, and I know that they are working up their assumptions and initial requests for the 2021 budget, and as far as I know at the present time, both in the executive budget, although I haven't seen it, and in the legislative budget, because I have talked to appropriations members, that is in the budget. So it looks pretty good that year two, we're, we're covered. Not that I have any question that it won't be, but obviously, it's something that you've got to, got to continue to review. And then there were some tactics that were involved. I won't go over those. Those are more in Michael's, Michael's purview. And then the third objective was monitor legislative actions, and that included some strategies of make-impact fee adjustments. I've been working with Councilman Good over the years. I've been beating my head against the brick wall. We have conducted, at your request, stakeholder meetings, a number of people. Unfortunately, it's one of those issues that involves all of the different communities, and there are downsides to it. And so we continue to work on it. We continue to run it up the flagpole. I met with the Homeowners Association of Central Arizona last week and raised the issue again, and when they, they were certainly willing to talk to us, but I still think that's an uphill battle. But we are trying, and I thank Councilman Good for his direction on that. Revenue and expense flexibility, obviously, we want to continue with that, and continue to monitor and support sales tax remittance from vacation rental websites. And you will remember that last year, the Wayfair decision was codified, so we now do have the ability to apply our transaction privilege tax to the city of Prescott, which is good. You should see some revenue boost from that. I suspect it should come probably by the third or fourth quarter of the fiscal. You may not have seen it yet, I would yield to our finance gurus. This means yes, this means no. What? You have started to see it. Yeah, okay. And you'll see it'll be increasing, probably at an increasing rate for the foreseeable future, and then it'll probably level off. The vacation rentals, and I'm going over this because you may want to now remove some of these things because they have been dealt with. The vacation rentals, Representative Kavanaugh did get a bill passed, full disclosure. I represented the tourism industry on that, the Phoenix, Mesa, Scottsdale, and Tucson Convention and Visitors bureaus, and we were able to get legislation passed that now requires that all short-term rental organizations are required to register and pay the transient lodging tax that is in Title 42. So you may want to consider removing that tactic because we have addressed it, and it is no longer there. There, there are some other, you know, budget considerations we want to make, but I think that they should be discussed rather under either economic development or, or, no, it should be, or quality of life when we get to those. And that has to do with the park that has been proposed, and that, I was just showing, I was just showing Tyler that as I was driving up here, I was delivered the folder draft of the bill that Mr. Campbell has written to try to get money to establish the park, and we can go over that under quality of life if you'd like. So I open up the floor, Mr. Mayor, for a conversation about the goals and objectives with regard to goal number one, and that's stabilizing the general fund.
Very good. Questions, comments from council?
I have a request. It's not working here.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you, Barry. As you know, water's in the forefront of all the news statewide, not just locally, and I was wondering if there's something about water that could be included in our strategic, in our strategic plan, because as I was doing my research on strategic planning, we should have some vision where we're going, what is our mission, purpose, what do we need to focus on in action, and I think we really do need to include an element concerning water. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rusin, I would draw your attention to goal number three, which is quality of life, and under one of the objectives, it is natural resource preservation and conservation, and I would suggest that if you wanted to add a reference to that, that would be the point at which we might want to bring that up for discussion if that would suit you. We can certainly add either a strategy or highlight it as part of the objective itself. And I will tell you, and again, full disclosure, City Attorney, I want you to notice that I said full disclosure, so even though I missed the first 25 minutes of your presentation, that I do represent the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association, which is the 10 cities that are CAP recipients in Maricopa County, and, and I have been working on, a matter of, I've been the moderator at the Water Vetting Forum that has been conducted among legislators and stakeholders. There's another one on Wednesday we're going to discuss, and I know that the water adjudication issue has been something that people in Yavapai County generally have been concerned about. One of the things that you might want to consider is adding to your legislative plan, supporting legislation that would provide for improved water adjudication process. I know that there are meetings going on probably as we speak with the Department of Water Resources and the courts and so on to determine what actually is necessary. That is one of those areas that would be something you might want to consider.
Yeah, because I really think that under goals and objectives, which is, falls to the city council, I think we should have some comments about water in those two categories.
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rusin, then if we can hold that, I will make a note, and we can discuss that when we get to goal number three, which is, and which quality of life has an objective that deals with natural resources, and water would be appropriate there.
Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Aaron's, for all your efforts. It's been pretty productive since you've been advocating for the city of Prescott, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
I do understand that there's been a substantial number of unanticipated consequences to the Vacation Rental Assembly Bill. What was that, 2024-79 or something like that? I was talking to some of the council members from Page, Arizona during the Arizona League, and they were saying that it's become so impactful up there that almost all of their available apartment rentals have almost been completely reduced because so many homes now are being rented out for vacation rentals that the available rental market for even city employees has almost evaporated, and it's having a lot of consequences in other communities as well. So I understand there is some effort to reform that in some manner, and that certainly would have impact on the revenue generated in Prescott as well. So can you speak to what your knowledge is of that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Good, we're bleeding a little bit into our legislative program for the year. If that's all right, we can just kind of blend the two together, and then when we get into formal council session, you can make whatever changes. I spoke with Senator Brophy McGee this morning. There was another stakeholder meeting, if you will call it, last night of an ad hoc committee of legislators that is looking into this. Let's separate the two issues for a second. The first issue was making sure that people who are in the business of providing for short-term rentals were registering and paying their taxes. We have successfully dealt with that. The other issue has to do with the authority of political subdivisions to pass and enforce ordinances with regard, and I think that's the issue that you're referring to. There are several communities, I represent the city of Scottsdale, we have had some very, very difficult times with regard to nuisance ordinance enforcement, the party houses, so to speak, and there's been a lot of commentary about that. The other problem that has existed has been those people who are buying up significant The other problem that has existed has been those people who are buying up significant blocks of property. Sedona is right now the poster child for that, quite frankly, where you have foreign investors who have purchased whole blocks in developed areas and are using them solely for those things. Here's the dynamic tension that exists. On one hand, you've got the, it is my private property, and I am using it only on a part-time, small basis. Whether that's true or not, we don't know, because we don't know. No way of judging that. But the problem is, is to manage that with the other side of the dynamic tension, and that is, you have an obligation, your citizens, to make sure that public health and safety is protected throughout the community. And if these are not held to a certain standard, you cannot guarantee that. I can tell you that at this point, there is an effort by Representative Kavanaugh, who was the sponsor of the bill that you referenced earlier, and Senator Brophy McGee, who are co-chairing this ad hoc interim committee, to try to migrate more towards, and I'll throw out a couple of the ideas that have been discussed. Nothing has been decided yet, no bill has been drafted. One thing has been decided would be that there has to be some type of verification that it is an owner-occupied or owner-homed, owner-home residence in order to be under the qualification of a short-term rental. If it is not, then it could conceivably fall under the, for both property tax and sales tax, transient lodging, which is what the promoters of this were trying to get away from, obviously. So that is one idea that could go to the point that you were making. How do you enforce that? Kind of difficult to do. IRS says that you're allowed to take a mortgage interest deduction on two residences, primary and secondary. Perhaps they could do that. So this is one of the ideas that have come up. That is going to be ongoing for the rest of this month. Obviously, the holidays get in the way of having productive meetings, but then in the first week of January, first full week. And I suspect that Mr. Kavanaugh will be involved. We are, my staff and I are participating those on behalf of both my tourism clients, the city of Prescott and the city of Scottsdale.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Yes, Barry. I don't know if you've seen the numbers for the PSPRS. Have you seen the numbers that Prescott?
Not as of the last quarter, I would say.
It's really excellent. So when we first started working on this, we were 30% funded. As of now, we're 58.5% funded.
That's great.
It is tremendous. And so I just want to say, a lot of that was the work that you have to stew on this, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm glad that it's working out. I look forward to it being retired.
We're actually going to be the poster child of turning this around.
Well, that, you know, it's interesting, when the discussions were occurring, and if you remember, Mayor Mangarelli's predecessor was conducting meetings among mayors throughout the state, and when they were talking about a lot of different things, two that kept coming back was what we did, and then what Chandler did. Chandler did a set aside of existing revenues, rather than build up a cash carry forward and designated those. Now, yours was more permanent. I mean, all it would take for Chandler would be a four to three vote, and you could reverse that and change it. You can't do that without going back to the people. So I think what you did was well-conceived and well-done.
To the degree that we think we actually may pay this off two years ahead of time.
I'm sure the taxpayers would love to hear that.
Councilman Sishka?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I've got a question for Michael, and I want to dovetail that into Barry. Michael, in the places you've been, have they had official grant writers for the political entities that you've worked for?
Councilman Sishka, usually, the task was divided among areas of specialization. We did not have a dedicated individual that searched out and wrote grants.
Okay.
In other words, if it was fire-related, it's something in the fire department, police, like, and that's sort of what we do here.
Okay. My question is, I'm hearing grants more and more and more. And my question is, is it time to, certainly upon agreement, is it time to start considering, looking at more of a Corvette way of doing grants rather than a Model T way, which it sounds like we're working with now?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sishka, I think grants have to be addressed, and this is just a viewpoint, having seen it from a variety of different clients, based on the grant that you're looking at and the subject matter that's being dealt with. For example, the $10 million we received from the Federal Aviation Administration, I mean, that was a very, very specific, detailed grant. And I know that Robin worked very, very hard on the crossing of the Ts and dotting the Is. And then at some point, it was out of our hands. And, you know, Mayor Mangarelli will tell you that I walked him through 11 congressional offices in a day and a half, and that was part of our message while we were back there. And obviously, his presence was significant in helping migrate things to the end. That required that. Now, there are some other grants that are either authorized by the federal government or, in some cases, nonprofits, in some cases, the state, in some cases, agencies of the state, where maybe you want to have somebody in the manager's office who has a, who has granted the responsibility to kind of decide who's supposed to write it, who's supposed to get it. So I would suggest to you that that's a strategy, and I would recommend that you allow the city manager's office to look into that, make that determination.
Thank you. Councilman Good?
I looked that up. Excuse me, City Attorney. I was on my cellphone to verify that House Bill number. So that was House Bill 2672 that had the vacation rental issues. Additionally, City Manager Lamar, is this an appropriate time to mention the investigation and study we've done on the IRS 115 issue?
I think that's completely reasonable, and Barry has been brought up to speed, and that was something that we were interested in considering personally. Did you want to talk a little bit about that, Tyler?
The, what Councilman Good is referring to is the Section 115 IRS Irrevocable Trust. This is something that PSPRS itself is looking at as an internal mechanism for further investments, a different option, you could say. We are curious, we've spoken with the League of Cities and others. City of Mesa is looking into it as well for a city option outside of PSPRS, which would theoretically allow cities another investment tool. You could divert some funding into that trust, which would be built, invested, probably a little bit more diversely than what cities can typically do. We are restricted, and what we can do as cities, to what we invest in. This would allow for more options. It would allow it to grow outside of the PSPRS system, at which point you could send it towards the PSPRS system to our account for unfunded liability or other things. So that's an option that we are looking into.
So Tyler, is that additional money that we would send to that fund, or is it a portion of our dedicated PSPRS funds?
I think it'd be up to you. It could be additional outside of what's being raised from the sales tax dedicated to it. But it's certainly up to the council how you would like to, if you would like to divvy it up and do that.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. The reason I brought this item up is my concerns with the lack of the PSPRS investment team to meet their expected rate of return. Even this year, I think S&amp;P 500 index generated about a 23% return. But PSPRS investment team had a net, published net return of five and a half percent against an expected rate of return of 7.3. So they missed their goal, which means that the liabilities will continue to grow in every account throughout the state. But with our additional funding, we've been able to overcome that and still make some substantial, incredibly substantial move forward. So with this potential alternate investment tool, we could create potentially our own diversified portfolio with legitimately low-fee investments, as long as they're properly diversified and well-designed, and potentially outperform PSPRS and use it as a benchmark. And eventually, if there were another, other municipalities that adopted this as well, it might hold PSPRS investments to a higher performance standard without taking high risks. We know that they were heavily invested in hedge funds, and now they're moving more and more investments into private equity, which is a different type of less-than-transparent fund structure. And in most cases, there's a goal of maybe 10 years, once the investment goes in there before you can actually withdraw it. And there's a lot of questions about how those funds or fees are calculated. And I would reference the PBS Frontline special on the condition of the Kentucky Pension Fund and how they have had real difficulty trying to identify exactly, actually, how much fees are being paid. And you think our pension fund is bad. Their combined performance level and funding is around 13%. So it's even more likely than Illinois, or New Jersey, or California to fail, should we get even a modest turn down in the economy. So it's something that we could consider. It's something that's, I think, legally possible. And from what we understand, because we're a chartered city, we do have some more options than non-chartered cities within the state. So another tool that might allow us to perform even better. Thank you.
Very good.
And if there's council desire to explore that, what we could do is, under one of the strategies, is that we could take it upon ourselves as staff to look into this and bring information back about what this would look like.
Yeah, I think having all the tools available makes sense. Absolutely. Let's see. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think, I think the other is that seems to be inconsistency in rates of return being reported. And so I think we would really need to have absolutely that this is what's being earned, and then what the potential would do in another fund. I mean, it could actually be less. So I just think we have to get everything on the table about that. So I certainly think we should explore it, but at the same time, we don't want to lose, stop what we're doing now.
Very good. I think we're ready to move on to goal number two, Barry.
Yeah, I had one suggestion, Mr. Mayor, if I could, and that is, in goal number one, I would suggest that under strategies, that you might want to strike in the third bullet and support and, so, and read, continue to monitor compliance of sales tax remittance from, making sure, we don't need to support it anymore, it's been done. So I would recommend that when you adopt the plan, that you make that amended change.
Very good.
Goal number two was economic development, and that was providing an environment to enable prosperity and job slash career creation. The drivers are tourism, medical, government, education, growth, supply chain industries, high-tech, and cybersecurity. The objectives, we had four of them. One was taking better advantage of community assets, and the strategies were generate revenues, explore strategies for technical trade, vocational, and other opportunities, and partner with ERAU on creating the Center for Future. I don't know what the status of is, that is, right now, I can tell you in all honesty, but I did not see any changes under objective number one. Objective number two, we'll need some modifications since we achieved the objectives, and that's really nice to know. When utilize a regionalization approach to attain financial stability for airport development, seek federal assistance. We have received that grant. My recommendation would be that you could probably delete that strategy, since it was there, and state assistance from ADOT. We received the matching funds that we got. I'd leave the Commerce Authority in. They frequently come up, to Councilman Sishka's point, with grant opportunities, and who knows that one of the utilizers of the airport facilities, and I know we've got a groundbreaking coming up, might be interested in applying for one of those Commerce Authority grants at some point in time. So my suggestion is, is that we continue to seek state assistance through the Commerce Authority would be the recommended change that I would make.
Barry, just
I'm sorry?
As an add-on or a dovetail, I think Tyler has some changes that are related to the airport that Robin put up, if you want to put them up on the board and see if there's any.
Is that this document?
It is.
Okay. Yeah, sure. So that's how that thing works.
Can you make it a little bit bigger, Tyler?
I can, yeah.
There you go.
There you go. So what it's got up there is a slight change, because we have added aviation aerospace and to that list. Are there things that were added? I don't see any others. So we would be adding aviation aerospace, which now, of course, is clearly appropriate. And then, under the objectives, we're changing the strategies to include maximizing revenues at existing city-owned operated locations, the airport, the golf course, et cetera, by seeking reasonable market rates for leases services and enforcement of collection of delinquencies. Explore strategies with academic trade institutions to build virtue workforce capabilities, and that's technical, trade, vocational skill, and career development, and encouraging business-industry partnerships with local colleges and universities to encourage innovation and student retention for employment. So that's under objective number one. And I think those are more metrics than strategies, so I would let the city manager's office make the decision of how to allocate those. Objective number two, utilize a regionalization approach. That's what we have, we have had, and that's the one that I think we should seek, it should be, seek continued support from available federal, state, and local, federal, state, and Commerce Authority funds or funding opportunities. And then the bottom one, encourage private development at the airport and surrounding areas in keeping with the airport master plan, FAA assurances, and state law. Next one is work with neighboring jurisdictions, keep compatible land uses, and reduce non-compatible encroachment around the airport. And the last bullet point, is that the last one, Tyler? Support future commercial air service growth and airport safety by constructing new airport passenger terminal, lengthening the main commercial service runway to address commercial air traffic weight restrictions, and relocating taxiway C, eliminating safety hotspots to meet the FAA standards for aircraft separation and airfield safety. And that new, reflecting the fact that we now have the funding necessary to move ahead with some of the projects we previously had. So that would be a new economic development goal and the attendant objectives and strategies that the council should consider adopting.
Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. I know in the previous version, we did reference Emory Riddle and creating a Center for the Future. I know we've had a leadership change at Emory Riddle, and I think the Center for the Future concept has been modified to some extent. Are we going to continue to reference that in our strategy? Should we have our economic development consultant, Jim Robb?
I think it'd be valuable to let Jim kind of tell you where that is and how that's been tweaked or modified. Jim, do you have a couple seconds?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. As you know, we had Frank Ayers, who was the chancellor of Emory Riddle and Nautical University when he was here, and we had started the process of creating a tech center for innovation at the Emory Riddle. And Emory Riddle was going to supply the land. And Embry-Riddle was going to supply the land, and we were going to find a commercial development that would build the building. The idea concept behind this was we had major corporations that wanted to do research. So just a two-second background that I think will help. Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University has been in our community for 40 years, God bless them. And in technology and startups, there have been one that have produced three jobs. So with Frank Ayers, the vice chancellor, and the deans of the college, what they wanted to do was to create a way that their students would be allowed and available to work with research for other major corporations from around the country and have them be here. An example would be Boeing has 4,000 graduates from Embry-Riddle, and I've never seen a Boeing sign out at Embry-Riddle. So we wanted, we wanted to change that. With Frank leaving and now Net Carlson as the chancellor, and Rhonda Capron, who was the vice chancellor, who just left, she'll be leaving January 13th. Kathy Lustig, who was the dean of the College of Arts and Sciences, is taking over. So the interest between our cybersecurity, which is by the College of Intelligence and Security with John Haas, we are investigating, still trying to build a center, but all now with commercial funding and commercial land. John today is flying to various companies. The head of all security for Facebook, Amazon, and Boeing happens to be Embry-Riddle graduates. So we are looking to private industry to try and help us to create the Center for the Future. It will be all private money, and we will work with the colleges and the universities with Yavapai College to get this done. But I think it's something that through the community that we want, still want to do. I don't think the city would have any responsibility from a financial aspect, but I think it's something that would have a huge impact on us for our, for our students that could stay here and work here.
Councilman Good.
Well, first of all, Mr. Robb, thank you very much for the efforts that you put in. I know it's taken a long time to get this ball rolling and being able to support your efforts perhaps needs to be increased to some extent. When it comes to commercial and private markets, it's not a static target. Things move and things change. And being able to get something significant on the, on the ground and established so that we can expect some of those early adopters to then be able to encourage secondary commitments to move forward is something that I think we need to really support. And I'm not sure if we've given you enough support to, to get those initial startups or transfers created. So I think that's something that I think everyone here has agreed is the kind of development we'd like to see. High income, high tech, low congestion, low impact on the quality
No water.
And no water. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Good, to answer your questions, there's a couple of components to this that I think the public might be interested in. First of all, that Prescott has such a unique, unique assets that just other communities don't have around the country, and that's our four colleges and universities. And believe me, to watch that 31% of the residents of Yavapai County travel over 50 miles for a job, which means they're basically going down to Phoenix to work. That's one of the things we want to stop. The flow of our education, our students to go down to Phoenix and other parts of the country to job, that's what we want to stop. So there's two components to this. One, what we started was what's called now is the Northern Arizona Technology Alliance. And we had our first, we had our first event with, we had over 70 people from Prescott that came to this event. So what is our goal? To have an organization that we can work with the Arizona Commerce Authority, the Arizona Technology Council, and bring in the state together to assist with us. Second point that's really important, the Arizona Commerce Authority, I have met with Sandra Watson a million times and Andy Lombard, which they just created this new position, and he is the executive vice president of innovation and venture for the state of Arizona. As you know, Sandra reports to the governor. I have, and Sandra, I can't tell you the amount of people that are in our state that are legislated, I've never been to Embry-Riddle. I had them come up here. So what we are creating is the state of Arizona has what's called a governor's innovation challenge, which is down in Phoenix, and people come from all over the country. It's raised hundreds of millions of dollars and created thousands of jobs. I convinced the Arizona Commerce Authority will have in this spring at Embry-Riddle and for our, our area up here, they're putting up $250,000 in prize money for companies to come back and compete in cyber, Internet of Things and other. And Tim Crown, who, Tim Crown is the founder of Insight, which is a $10 billion tech company in the valley. He has Crown Investments. He invests in every tech that comes out of Sky Song and ASU. He was up here and he's going to match the money that the Commerce Authority. So we will have up here, companies coming from all over the world to compete, and there's $500,000 in prize money. John Haas and Embry-Riddle has been gracious to host this and put this together. These foundations of our Northern Arizona Technology Alliance, the foundation of the Commerce Authority recognizing what we in Northern Arizona have to offer with our students and what we have to offer with our citizens is to help us to create these jobs. Lastly, the Arizona Technology Council, which has their leadership retreat up here for the last three years, we have over 100 tech CEOs that are here. We are now getting ready that the first one will be a company by the name of J-Curve, which is located down in the valley, and they have over 450 employees in Tempe, and they are going to open up in the first quarter up here with, starting with 25. And I'll hook them up, they'll be hooked up with Yavapai College. These are high-tech jobs. They'll start with 25 and they'll be going to 100. So there's a lot of undercurrent that's going on that we've all been working on, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council for, for letting us do this. But, you know, when you look in these young people's faces, and they want to live here, they want to stay here, and we can't provide them those jobs? That's kind of, kind of a shame to watch them go to other places when they want to be here and live here. And I think all of you have helped to create where we're really close to getting some good jobs. And one thing I'd like to do in public is thank Mr. Michael Lamar with aviation and the support of the mayor and the support of the city council. Understand what this is. This is a universal change in technology and aviation for the entire world. And if you don't get a chance to go out and see the Alice aircraft, it is the most unbelievable thing you want to see. And it took me two years to stop saying engine. I have to say electric motor, and I have been reprimanded many times. So clean and energy and the jobs that we're going to bring here, they won't use any water and, well, they'll drink it, but they aren't going to, they aren't going to use it. And these are, these are, these are good paying jobs, an average job that an Embry-Riddle graduate gets when, when he graduates is around 90,000. And so if we can keep some of those here, wouldn't that be nice? Thank you very much. Any questions, just let me know.
Councilman Siskas.
Yeah, I have a question for you, Jim.
I was running, Steve.
I was, yeah. You didn't move fast enough. My question is this, you know, I was really enthusiastic, I am enthusiastic about Center for the Future. I think that it's something that would really put us in the stratosphere as far as economic development's concerned. But what is the major objection to not having something out of the ground already right now?
Um, there's two, there's three pieces to the puzzle. And the first, you guys are really solving quickly. I had people here from all over the country, and here's what they told me. This is the first one. Jim?
Yes.
I'm not going to take a bus to Phoenix. I'm not going to have my company here and have to go down on a, on a bus or car. You need, you need an airport to go someplace. With the advent of United Express, Sky West being here, and flying to Denver and Los Angeles, that got people's attention. So that was one. That was probably one of the biggest objectives we had. The issue of not having the foundation to bring these people together, it's hard to do it remotely. And what happens is innovate, so let me give you an example. When I helped Ben Oregon, the first thing I said is, guys, you got to have a fort. You got to have someplace to attract these people. And what they did is that we combined economic development with tourism. And what we knew is because their airport, you could fly from San Francisco, San Jose, Portland, Seattle, Los Angeles, you can be there quick. And we said, hey, tell them, come here, do you really want to live in San Francisco with a $6,000 one-bedroom apartment? Or would you rather live someplace where you can raise your family and be safe? The guys that I knew bought the old flower mill and turned it into a tech center, where a place where they said, you come here, everything's free. We'll mentor you, we'll help you. And this was a, this was a city that had 21% unemployment in 2008 because it was all based on golf courses, it was based on retirees coming. It was a vacation place. And to let you know how that turned around, if you look at Millikan Small Cities in the last two years, it's number one. It has the biggest tech conference in, in the Northwest now. So what you've got is a combination of retirees, young people, new people, and it's kind of rejuvenated itself. And when we look at the assets that we have, it's 10 times, there wasn't even a college in Bend. It's 10 times what we, what's all around our own state and around the country. We need a fort, and the fort is the center. You have to have the foundation.
And how successful are you at, or let's say, how successful is the market at generating capital for such a fort?
Um, it's still going to need the help of the colleges, and I'm going to have to find private investment from around the state. So, so far, the idea of having this event that we're having with the Commerce Authority, the tech council, what has happened is my first objective was to create awareness with the state that we're here and to let them know what our assets are and keep coming back and coming back. With the advent of aviation, that opened up a lot of doors that weren't there. Candidly, when I, when I'm one-on-one with Sandra Watson, these people, they quote unquote, how did you guys do that? How did you get that aviation company to come here? And that was kind of the thrust that started the whole thing. And now we're going to, we're going to leverage that.
Just to dovetail what Jim's saying, as we talk about objectives and goals, I think we should have something specific to aviation. They're here, we can't lose them. And I don't know how you want to say that, but
I think
I think this would be one of the main focuses is Alice is here, somebody lock Alice up.
Yeah, we need to secure their integration facility.
And that, and Greg, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's extremely critical. I think what you, what you see is I'll come in once in a while and you see the surface of what we talk about, the underpinnings of what's done every day. I call Leland every morning. I, I watch every single thing that's going on. I've got every spy in, in the state of Washington, from Moses Lake where they're doing the FAA certification into MAGNEX, into the engines, into everything that's going on. I know every time something, and I'll alert Michael, or Michael will call the, the Omer in Israel and say, hey, so we're, we're, we're on top of it. Motors! Motors.
Well, thank you so much, Jim. I appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proten?
Yes, I actually had written down here aviation. I think we specifically need to address support, whatever we need to do to lock that down for aviation, because that is, you know, the Center for the Future is wonderful, it's in the future, but right now, today, we have aviation. And if we're not really, what's the word, intentional about keeping them here and how we can support them, it may be, but it means that we have some financial, you know, skin in the game. And I know we've done a lot of that already, Michael, with their, helping them with their hangar and things, but I just think it needs to be intentional in our strategic plan.
We have, Billy, but you know, they're the kind of company that we invested some money towards repairing what, where is Robin? She could tell you what the status of that hangar was. It was, well, I could tell you we were going to demolish it. They dropped about $900,000 of their own money in it. That's the kind of company you want to keep in town.
Yeah, that'd be a good addition.
Yeah, to that point,
You should do that.
Under the new set of objectives that was up on the screen, the third strategy undertaking better advantage community assets includes encourage business industry partnerships. And you could certainly add a tactic that could very specifically delineate aviation.
I think we should.
And I think that would be the appropriate thing to do. So Tyler, if you want to make a note of that. So that, that covers the new goal two with the objectives for economic development. If there's no other discussion, we can move on to goal three. Goal three is quality of life, and I'd like to address Councilmember Rusing's issue of water. First of all, it says a clean and safe city that provides superior essential services, enhances opportunities that allow for retention, attraction of people who want to live, learn, work, and play in Prescott. And objective number one is natural resource preservation and conservation. Engage in cooperative efforts with political entities, subdivisions, and private property owners to, to work to ensure preservation, conservation, natural resources. And here is where you may want to add two strategies. And the two that are most often included by municipalities are remembering that we're not a CAP recipient, okay? We're a, an area, but we don't have the same issue that Phoenix and Tucson has. However, the two issues that you may want to address are, number one, to take every effort necessary to preserve the Arizona Groundwater Management Act, which is what we have been doing since 1980. And yes, I was there in 1980 on those meetings. And then secondly, support conservation measures to maximize water availability. And I think that if you include those two, most of the issues that will fall in water management are probably going to come under one of those two headlines. So you might want to include that as a separate set of strategies under natural resources preservation. Secondly, highly rated city services, perceived as and are measurably delivering efficient and effective services, including transportation. I'm sorry. Including transportation, improved flow, well-maintained streets, public safety code compliance, water and wastewater services. And that's service delivery as opposed to water management. That's why I separated the two. And the strategy is consider traffic flow, traffic management, study public transport opportunities through political subdivision coalitions, continue to work with the legislature to restore HERF money, and I think it's essential that we leave that in there because that's an ongoing battle. And support statewide hands-free driving legislation. And this is where I get to sing this council's praises. You directed me last session to go to the legislature and get a statewide hands-free bill passed, and we did. And, and I want to thank the council for, number one, having the courage to say it's time to do it. I want to publicly thank Senator President Karen Phan, who enabled us to go ahead and do it, and Senator Brophy McGee, and Senator David Livingston, who actually were the ones who crafted the legislation and it got done. So I'm very happy to say that you can remove that strategy. It's not necessary any longer. And then third, cultural and recreational experiences to facilitate intergovernmental agreements and public-private partnerships to provide opportunities for cultural and recreational experiences. And there are some tactics in here, which you can update periodically at the discussion of the city manager. And with those changes, I think you are in pretty good shape with regard to quality of life, goal three, unless there are any suggestions to the contrary.
Very good. Mayor Proten?
Yes, thank you. Barry, I would add that Simpo, Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning, Christopher Bridges, they worked on that for three, four years with the county, and, and they really helped us all get it, we got it done community-wide here. So I appreciate that and all the work that was done at the state. So the mayor is creating a commission on well-being. And so I would like to look at that goal number one, I think we should incorporate this because to me, this is exactly what a community of well-being is, is that, so I would like to say, and as you know, Town Hall, you're involved in Arizona Town Hall.
Yes, I'm on the board.
And our, our next year, this coming year, will be about healthy communities, vibrant communities. So I would like to put that in here. So I would like to put that in here so we could maybe adjust this, the quality of life, create a vibrant community of well-being, clean, safe city that provides, I just would like to use those words because I think it connects us with what we're going to do with this commission, and I guess a lot of it's communicating what we have already.
I think the language, if you captured that, Tyler, I think the language you just articulated would fit, we can carve it into the objective if you'll allow us after this. And then as far as the commission is concerned, if you want to include that as one of your strategies or let the staff include it as a tactic, that would be appropriate.
Great, thank you.
Tyler, can we do that? Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you, Mayor. Another thing I'd like to suggest, we talked about economic development, but we haven't talked about growth and development, residential and commercial growth. I think we should include that, an element of that, make a statement as to where we want to go with that, et cetera.
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rusing, it would be appropriate to put that somewhere in the second goal under economic development, and it probably would be an objective in and of itself. And if you will allow staff to work on some language on that, I think I captured the essence, and Tyler and I have had a pretty good run of working that language in, so we would be happy to do that.
Councilman Sishka?
Thank you, Mary. Barry, I'd also like to see in that same realm, the word renewal in there somewhere. I think that it's, you know, we talk about growth and development, but I think that it's imperative that no matter how we approach that situation, that we renew and we commit to renewing this town, this city, I'm sorry.
And I assume you're referring to the language fix that we are going to do for Councilmember Rusing. All right, we will weave that in together. I think that makes a lot of sense. All right.
Other questions, comments from the council on this one?
So, Mr. Mayor, I believe we're up to Goal Number Four, which is service-oriented culture. Promote an accountable organizational culture of excellent, superior, solutions-driven service. Our objective here is to measurably promote, and I want to underline that, measurably promote, excellent service delivery based on trustworthy, timely, problem-solving, engaging, valuable, accessible, actionable, fair, consistent, common-sense services permitted by existing resources and by effective use of those resources. And we included as part of our strategies, continuous customer service training, customer service feedback, performance measures from each department, and a shared vision, culture among employees at all levels of development. And I think that the city manager's office probably has collected whatever metrics they have been assigned to collect with regard to meeting those strategies, but I would suggest that those strategies kind of remain in force. Number two, promote continuous process improvement, which fosters better processes and procedures to improve customer service and provide quality services at the lowest possible cost to taxpayers. And two of the strategies that we discussed include the employee's contribution, improved levels, service levels, and employee evaluations. And I would yield to Manager Lamar to see how we're progressing on that. I assume we are working through that at the present time, but that, yeah.
Revamp the evaluation forms.
Right.
Taken away some of the, for lack of a better term, boilerplate numerical scoring and hopefully made it a more two-way conversation about employees' performance between themselves and their supervisor.
And I think that that remains as a work in progress and will continue as well as fostering a culture that encourages employee morale. So that would be the situation with regard to Goal Four. I think we're still on path with it.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I would just like to say to our staff, and we have several in the room here today, and Michael, I think that we've just turned this around since we first wrote this strategic plan about customer service and, you know, a culture of yes. I've seen the difference throughout the city, and a lot of it's the leadership of the departments, and just want to say kudos to all because you've really done a great job. So just, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. It's an ongoing pursuit, and we're not where we want to be, but we're certainly coming along.
A long way in three years, Mr. City Manager.
Councilman Sishka?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to see somewhere in there the word facilitate. I think that it's really important that we continue to look for ways to find a way to yes, and so-
You're referring, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sishka, I assume you're referring to the culture of enforcement changed to culture of service, seeking to have a culture of yes, is that the reference that you're making? Okay. So we want to add, you want to weave the word facilitate into that statement then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Just one. It's a strategic plan, so strategically, how often should we be updated on the progress or the things that are taking place? Not necessarily from you, Barry, but from our own city manager, the rewrite of the people that are leaving the city, they fill out a questionnaire of why they're leaving the city, have we improved on those different things, and how have we improved on those things, and just an overall update?
Yeah, sure, Councilman Blair, I think that having that more than once a year is probably a legitimate and reasonable expectation. We could do it twice annually, we do it quarterly. It's really at the will of you guys at High Well.
I think Tyler does a good job, department to department, every month of giving us an update on what's going on, but I also think the community needs to know what we're doing with their sales tax dollars. So I think we should be updated on the strategic plan once every quarter to let us know what the progress is.
Yeah, I think if you could schedule that, that'd be pretty easy to do in a study session or something.
Yeah, and we could, you know, spend just that 15 minutes or half an hour to give you an update. That's fine.
And that can include what we're doing on the pay evaluations and on a lot of different things. It's just not one specific thing. It can be employee-based presentation on one of the updates and maybe economic-based on another one, you know, take each one of them. We have four elements there, so maybe each quarter you give us an update on one of the elements.
That'd be great.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment on Councilmember Blair's comment, it's two different phases. There's a quarterly kind of, here's where we are on the metrics. And then there's an annual review, which is what we're doing today, which has traditionally been done in the fall or winter, depending upon everybody's availability, where you look at, okay, what have we done? Done, check it off the list, delete it, we don't need it anymore. What kind of language do we need to add? Councilmember Rusing's comment about, well, let's add water because that's important. That's a once a year. So I think that it's a two-pronged effort. It's a quarterly update on meeting the metrics or exceeding the metrics, hopefully, and then it's an annual review of what changes do we need to make to update ourselves and continue to be efficient and effective.
And I don't think there's anything wrong with blowing our own horn, saying, "Look what we've done based upon the plan we created, and look what we've done, and now we're going to move to that next level." I think people need to know that we're actively working for them.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Blair, I couldn't agree more. So with that, Mr. Chairman, Mr., I'm so used to committee hearings. Mr. Mayor, what I would recommend is that you allow the staff, and by the way, I want to publicly commend Tyler. I work with him very closely. We talk frequently on the phone, and he's always available, and that's one of the things that's really nice about it. And we work very, very well together in capturing what you're saying and then converting it into the documents that we need to do. And I think that if you will allow us a little time to go ahead and make the updates of this as were recommended by the members of the council today, then I think we can have it back to you in January to be able to formally adopt it as your updated 2020 strategic plan.
No, that sounds great. I appreciate you being here and facilitating and all your work with the legislature. I know we're going to have an update on that agenda next meeting, but it's very, very beneficial to have you here facilitating this and helping us with the work with the legislature and everything else you do, so we really appreciate your efforts, Barry.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I enjoy working for the city. Thank you.
All right. I don't think there's anything else at this time, so this meeting is adjourned. We'll see you at 3 o'clock.